I call a meeting to order. Good evening. My name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board on behalf of my fellow Board members in the Town Managers' Office, I want to welcome you to our January 7th, 2025 Select Board meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Sarah Hashi of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. Tonight's meeting will also be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow, where all of our previous meetings are also available. Before we begin, I ask that our members introduce themselves.
I'm Beth Cassaviet.
Teresa Flynn.
Michelle Conlin.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
Mr. Garcia is joining us remotely, so won't see him, but he is, we'll hear him be joining remotely, and we'll take votes by roll call vote. I am John Samia and I'm Chair of the Select Board. Mr. Garcia, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, and we will take votes by roll call vote. So the first item on the agenda in the preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moved and seconded. A roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Vote passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item in the preliminaries to review, an act to approve the minutes of December 17th, 2024, which was our last meeting.
So moved. Second?
Have been moved and seconded. A roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is announcements, reports, colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement.
Sure.
The application window for the Senior Tax Work Off Program is now open. The Senior Citizen Tax Work Off Program is open to senior citizens age 60 and older who own property in and pay real estate taxes to the town of Shrewsbury. Applications being picked up during the Shrewsbury Senior Center hours. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, February 13th. Positions will be announced the week of February 17th. For more information, please visit the Council on Aging Department website or call the Senior Center at 508-841-8640 and ask for Assistant Director Casey Bogan.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, let's move next on a Town Manager report. Mr. Mizikar, anything new? Nothing there. Next item is under Public Comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31. This offers, in addition to our office hours, an opportunity for citizens, the opportunity to provide public comments during our meetings and matters within our authority. No one has expressed a desire to speak with us this evening, however, those that wish to speak at a regularly scheduled meeting going forward should notify the Chair through the Select Board's office by the end of business on the day prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting by written correspondence or email us at selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov. Next item on the agenda, under Financial Business, Quarterly Update on Fiscal Year 2025, and I'd like to invite Mr. Snowden to come up. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. All right. Good evening. Tonight, I'm looking forward to reviewing the second quarter financials for the town's general fund and enterprise funds, both revenue and expenses. We can go to the next slide, Justin. Thank you. These, this presentation has been extracted from quarterly port data provided from the town's Enterprise Resource Planning System. The figures are unaudited at this point in time, and throughout the year, sometimes there may be further adjustments in quarter one or two, in later quarters, but this provides a good snapshot. First, we will start with the revenues. So in this table here, what you can see is tax revenue, net state aid, and local receipts on the left-hand side. And then it shows the, the first column would be the annual town meeting budget, the special town meeting budget, and then we have Q1, Q2, so quarter two ended December 31st. And then we have year-to-date, the delta, and then the percentage. So at this point in time, this is very similar to where we would typically be at this, at this point in the year. We're pretty close to 50% across these major revenue categories, being taxation, state aid, and local receipts. Sometimes we receive funding at the beginning of the year or end of the year, depending on specific categories, so there's no major outliers at this point in time. Go to the next slide, please, Justin. Now, if we're looking at the general fund expenses, the annual town meeting budget of $66,978,199. Now, it's important to know this is less education expenses. This does include some of the carryforwards from FY '24. And at this point in time, we are about 49.54% expended. And again, this is typical, at the end of quarter one, we're usually a little bit higher than 25%, and that's mainly because the retirement OPEB typically are upfront payment on July 1st. But again, this is fairly standard for where we'd be at this point in time in history. All right, next slide, please. All right, so next, we'll go over the enterprises individually. We'll do revenue and expenses for each one. And again, those, these will be quick snapshots. So if we go to the solid waste enterprise in the next tab. So the general fund subsidy for the solid waste enterprise comprises, raises about 53.3% of the total revenue. There's also other revenues through the retained earnings appropriations. And as of 6/30/2024, retained earnings for solid waste was $237,183. Year-to-date, we've received about 47% of our revenue, not counting the tax, tax revenue, and expenses are about 42.76% at this point in time. The, the solid waste sometimes can be variable depending on the recycling market, so again, there aren't any major outliers at this point in time. And expenses and revenues seem to be in line with previous years. Next slide, please. All right, water utility. The water utility, other revenues typically include article closeouts with the water conservation funds. At this point in time, revenues generated to date are about 52.09%. Expenses are a little bit lower. Sometimes this is related to project closeouts and when payments for projects actually are completed, so we'll keep an eye on this. But revenues are tracking as they need to, and expenses in the projects, within the warmer weather, will probably start picking up again. Moving to the next slide. Now, we're looking at the sewer enterprise. Again, revenues a little bit higher, 64% received, and again, expenses are lower. This is, again, related to projects that are either have started and haven't been billed or are beginning to go underway. The other revenues categories for sewer includes the inflow and infiltration fund, article closeouts that were identified at the town meeting, and use of the sewer surplus, in this case, which is similar to the retained earning in the other enterprise funds. And then lastly, we can look at the stormwater. Revenue generated to date is 52.56%, and expenses at this point is just shy of 20% as well. And there should be some capital expenses coming up soon as well for this project that we'll see in the future quarters. So again, this was just a really meant to be a quick snapshot of where we are halfway through the financial fiscal year, and this will obviously grow as, in detail, by the next quarter and the final quarter.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a question. On the expense side, for water, sewer, and stormwater being lower, you know, 29, 17, 19%, is that typical of what we see this time of year? And so, you know, with, we're in the middle of winter at this point, and those will meet what we anticipate as we get into warmer weather?
That is correct, yes. So there could have been some projects at the beginning of the year that will be picked back up again. So it could be, it's the timing of, timing of payments, and sometimes it's the larger capital cost as well.
Okay.
So, yes, this is fairly standard, and a lot of the expenses also are captured in warrant articles, which are not always constrained to the single fiscal year, so those expenses can be carried out in future years as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple of quick ones. We've talked about this before, but just to recap, local receipts?
Yep.
In the past few years, at the special town meeting, we adjusted as well, but are we starting to see a leveling out now of where we are for local receipts? Not post-COVID, we had a bump up, and we've adjusted accordingly, but do we start to see that leveling out now?
Justin, if you don't mind going to the first slide.
Yeah.
I, I think it may be a little early to tell, but.
Next two months.
If you look at this right now, we've received, we, as you indicated, initial town meet, annual town meeting budget for local receipts was $14.5 million. At the fall town meeting, we upped that to 15.5.
Yeah.
Year-to-date, we've received about $7 million. So that's a little less than half. But early in February, March is when we see the really big motor vehicle, so that'll be more telling, I think, by the next quarter, to really see if we're leveling off or if we're still trying to catch up.
Okay. And then inflation generally, obviously, has slowed down, but are we seeing, costs haven't gone down, but are we seeing, particularly with outside service providers alike, still increase in services generally, or we're seeing any challenges with that, or prices externally stabilize as well, so our budget doesn't have any risk in that sense?
Yeah. And talking to some of the department heads as they're preparing their FY '26 budgets, you know, fees for service, there are increases, but they are in the range of 3% to 5% so far. We'll probably see a couple outliers as we get into the Finance Committee meetings, but there hasn't been anything significant at this point in time.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing is, depending on what the incoming administration does and tariffs and looking at that, I don't think that will have a lot of impact on what we do, but it's something we just need to be mindful of.
Yep.
I mean, it's a TBD.
Correct.
Obviously, but if, probably shouldn't impact us too much, I don't think.
I, I think at this point, we, we've been anticipating some, you know, growth, but not, I don't think we'll see anything too outrageous.
Okay. So it's where we expect to be right now.
Correct.
Summary, everything that we have here, and, okay.
Yeah, and I, going forward, we're, through the work of Julie Tierney and Taylor, the intent is to have these financial reports available on the website in a trackable format for residents to be able to see, you know, how we are tracking with our goals financially and performance-wise. So this data should be available online in the coming months.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a quick question about the solid waste enterprise, you know, saying 53.3% from tax. I know we try to keep it balanced pretty much 50/50. What did we say? We were going to revisit bag fees every five years? Is that true?
That's correct.
Haven't we passed five years?
We are, we are right at that point, yes. So it's, it's going to be a timing. Decision for the Board and the community to decide when we want to review that again, but yes.
Because it's still pretty close to 50/50?
It is, yeah.
But I also think, I mean, I know that we talked the last time, right, it was like, they had not been raised ever.
Correct.
Right? So when we had to raise them five years ago, it was a huge impact to people. But I do want to stay true to that, you know, look at them and make sure that when we do have to raise them, it's just a nominal amount, right, so that we're not hitting people with a really big increase.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and that may be, you know, an important discussion for the Board to consider when they want to introduce that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think if it's a few cents, people don't really have the same reaction to, like, we really bumped them the last time.
Yeah, like it's 60% or...
We had to. I just want to keep an eye on that 53% and make sure it doesn't get too far past where we have to make a huge course correction.
Correct.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comments, Mr. Mizikar?
I don't have any.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Snowden.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is under New Business, to review an act to sign the warrant for the February 4th, 2025 special election. This item requests that the Board signs the warrant for the February 4th, 2025 special election. The warrant includes one item, question one, which asks registered voters on whether to approve the decision of Representative Town Meeting under Article 9 of the Special Town Meeting on November, held on November 18th, 2024. As you recall, at our last meeting, we approved the form of ballot last December 17th. Note that the polling hours are 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., as confirmed by Town Council and the Director of Electors Division, excuse me, Director of Elections Division, the Secretary of Commonwealth Office. The, the act establishing Representative Town Meeting states that the poll shall be opened at 2:00 and shall be closed not earlier than 8:00 in the evening, and there is no discretion to move from that. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, wait, yeah, we'll have a motion in a second, sorry. Got to remind myself of the roll call vote. Go ahead, sorry.
I move the Board sign the warrant for the February 4th, 2025 special election.
Second?
Have been moved and seconded. A roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to select a principal proponent and principal opponent pursuant to Chapter 427 of the Acts of 2006 for the question on February 4th, 2025 special election ballot concerning the action of the Representative Town Meeting regarding Article 9 of the November 18th, 2024 Special Town Meeting. As we set December 17th, that proponents and opponents, the deadline was noon on yesterday, and we received one submission from the proponents and one submission from the opponents. What the Act requires is that we select a principal proponent and principal opponent. For question one, the written arguments by said proponent and opponent will be included in a voter guide sent to all registered voters at least 10 days prior to the election. The Act states that the principal proponents and opponents of any question shall be those persons determined by the Board of Selectmen to be best able to present the arguments for and against the question. In this case, it's pretty easy for us. This one, I'll read the proponent, and then the proponent's name, and then the opponent's name. The proponent's name is Beth Shay Bryant, Chair, Community Supporters for Responsible Shrewsbury, 39 Woodway Drive. And then the opponent, there's one, Brian Costello, Chairperson, and Caroline May Comer, Treasurer, vote no for Shrewsbury, 394 Walnut Street. Given that there are no, there's only one of each, I think this is pretty easy for us. So if there are no questions or comments, entertain a motion for the Board. Mr. Mizikar, am I missing anything? I think I covered everything. Okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second?
Have been moved and seconded. A roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next question under New Business, colleagues, is to review an act on whether to take a position on the question on the February 5th, 2025 special election ballot. I know we've talked a lot about this. This was a couple-year process where there were lots of discussion throughout the community. There were hearings. This board, we recommended to Town Meeting article, that the article be approved, and then we know where Town Meeting went. We talked a lot about this at our meeting on December 17th, and here it is in front, do we want to take a position on it? Where my head is at is pretty simple. Given that we've talked about this a lot, is, is looking at this about what our, what we've said in terms of compliance. We've talked a lot about compliance, and I affirm the position that our Board had. We, we focused on compliance, as well as Town Meeting, which is our governing body, and they overwhelmingly voted the amended motion, 123 to 50, which I also believe that still should be affirmed, given that's our form of government. We've already talked about at the end of this month to move forward, potentially looking at that, but right now, that is the government that has served us well for a long period of time. And I still believe, given that, and we've talked about being in the best interest of the community, and for me, we have talked a lot about it, we've debated a lot about it, but putting it forward to me is I affirm our position on this in terms of the compliance and the importance of compliance and the funding that has played an integral role in our community, not only historically or going forward, but as well as the, the vote at Town Meeting. I also really affirm that, and, and it's, that's it for me, is that, that affirm the, the action taken by Town Meeting, given the rigorous debate and the 123-50 result. And that's really all I have in terms of taking a position on that, but I'm obviously open to it, but that, when I looked at this, that's what, how I thought about it.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question? You know, when you say review and act on whether to take a position, what, what does that mean? Is it the Board, like, are we taking a vote?
Well, it could be to support, basically, what's our position? Do we support the action taken or affirm or approve the action taken by Town Meeting effectively, or really, which is question one, which is, do we, is it affirming the action of the Town Meeting vote that was taken with respect to that zoning?
And other than just having a position so the public is clear on where we stand, I mean, really, it doesn't have any bearing on the process or the outcome. This is going to the town for a vote, so.
Right.
Individuals will vote. So I think it's pretty obvious, given everything that we have said historically, but I'm happy to, I concur with everything you said. I don't really feel the need to repeat it.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. We've, we've talked about it a lot, even looking at the minutes from our December 17th meeting, but floors everyone's to, give thoughts.
I just see this as a formalization of the two years that we've spent, you know, talking about compliance, right? We've been talking about this since March of 2022. I don't think it's us saying anything on the merits of the law, or whether or not we feel like this is a law that should have been enacted, and we're just saying, or I'm saying, as I've said all along, right, I see compliance as the best path for Shrewsbury because being ineligible for what's up to now 29 grants, and the list keeps growing, that to me weighs heavily. But also, I just, I just think that upholding the vote of Town Meeting is important. Sometimes votes go my way, sometimes they don't go my way, but either way, in either instance, I always feel like Town Meeting has done the job of vetting and debating and making a decision that they feel is in the best interest of Shrewsbury. This needed to pass by a majority vote. It passed by two-thirds, 150, or 123 to 50. So to me, my position all along has been compliance, but also I see the importance of affirming the vote of Town Meeting and the work of Town Meeting.
Mrs. Conlin?
I think that, you know, it's important that, I think that it makes sense for the Board to formally put, you know, take a position and, you know, potentially issue a statement, just sort of summarizing the, the discussions that we've had for the last two years, and, you know, why we have voted the way we did and why we support the vote of Town Meeting.
Yeah, I, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of talk, and there will continue to be a lot of talk, and I think that, you know, obviously, we as individuals in the community can have whatever conversations we want, but I, you know, just agree. It's, it's, I hope people are clear on what they're voting on. It's not MBTA zoning initiative. It is whether or not Shrewsbury will comply with what is currently a law in the state of Massachusetts. And I know that there are different opinions on whether or not this is, you know, legal. We know that the SJC is considering the Milton case, and while we don't know that that will have any impact on Shrewsbury, but, you know, this was not what I would say in my, when I voted for, you know, the, the timing of the special election. It was, you know, Town Meeting did vote on it. That is our legislative body. We are out of compliance today, waiting, you know, a half a year plus to sort of decide or know with certainty where we stand. I think that the special election will tell us, are we going to be in compliance, or are we not going to be in compliance? And if we're not going to be in compliance, we need an action plan in terms of how we are going to, you know, deal with that. So I think that the timing is, is appropriate. And again, I think that if residents have questions about what it is that they're voting on, I mean, the warrant is the warrant, the ballot, and I know in typical, you know, legislative language, I mean, I think that the proponent and the opponent laid out what they see as the issues. And I think that to someone who has not been following it, they're not, they're not going to know either way. So I think it's sort of, to every resident, we hope you go out and vote. You know, anyone who says that we are trying to rush this so we don't generate voter turnout, that is not my position at all. And I just would encourage people to find their source of truth and, you know, determine who they trust to give them accurate information. And that might be one of us. It might be someone who is, is an opponent, or maybe someone in the middle. But people will have to do their research, given, you know, the amount of information that's out there to really determine what their personal position is on this. But, you know, me, as an elected official, it's really hard when we're faced with decisions that maybe are not the community's preference. But my action has always been in what I think is in the best interest of the town. And so I think if anybody wants to discuss that, I would encourage them to reach out to, you know, whomever they feel would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll be brief, since I know we've spent a lot of time on this, but I, I think it's, I also, I agree that I think it's important for our Board to continue supporting our plan for compliance, as well as reaffirming the action of Town Meeting. We as a Board unanimously supported Article 9 by physically standing in favor of it, and I think that we also continue standing in support of the action taken in November. And as more residents gather information before they make their decision next month, I do hope that our website, you know, includes the most up-to-date information, especially on the course piece, you know, as we know, that list keeps growing, and ethics evidence. That information will be helpful as they make their decision.
Thank you. So what's the pleasure of the Board on this? I've heard similar comments from everybody. It's compliance, upholding the vote of Town Meeting. Do we want to take formal action on it, or is it the consensus that we have? And to me, it's, that could be as recommending voters to approve the decision of Representative Town Meeting? Is it something that we're comfortable with doing? It's just really, that's all, that's what we're talking about. I mean, it's for compliance and to uphold what Town Meeting has done. So is that something we're...
I think we need to take a vote on it, you know, we're, we recommend warrant articles, we take hard votes all the time. We voted on this multiple times, and I think we should just, one more time, affirm that we see this compliance and upholding the vote of Town Meeting as the path we would recommend for Shrewsbury. And then let, as my colleague said very well, let the voters decide, do their research, and decide yes or no.
That could be our motion.
I was going to say that.
Yeah. So moved?
Second?
Have been moved and seconded. A roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the address change request of David Richard to change 369-371 Maple Avenue to 309-309 Boston Turnpike. This item requests our approval of an address change request pursuant to the Board's Operational Policy 29, which requires that any address changes for commercial properties are also approved by the Board. As you recall, last year, we revised this policy for existing commercial properties. It's been a slightly streamlined approach, and that's what's in front of us as well. The request seeks to change the address of the parcel where Turnpike Auto Body has been, I think, since the 1960s, together with Richard Car Wash. Where they're located, the current address is 369-371 Maple Avenue, and the request to change it to 309, 307 to 309 Boston Turnpike. Yeah, the addresses have been 307-309 Boston Turnpike for the USPS, and are used by other, other town departments for billing purposes, including Selco, the Water and Sewer Division and Treasurer Collector. So this is, and this is recommended to the Board to approve. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move approval. Second?
Have been moved and seconded. A roll call vote is required. Have been moved and seconded, a roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion carries unanimously. I like talking about myself in the third person. Last item on the agenda is to review an act on the road race request for the Shrewsbury Pride five K on Saturday, June seventh, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. beginning at Oak Middle School, going down Shady Lane Avenue, Edgewood Road, Maple Circle, Maple Avenue, and concluding at Oak Middle School. Looking forward to nice June weather. Any questions or comments? Sounds like a great event, not entertain a motion?
May I just ask a question? Does the road get closed during the road race or is there just like a police detail for, you know, when there are runners on the road?
I think it's just, I mean, in my experience, they don't, we don't, they don't close the road for the turkey trot either.
This reminds me of the old Road Scholars Road Race.
Yeah.
This path, that's what this reminds me of.
Yeah, it is, I think it's the same path.
And you run on the sidewalk, there's a detail, typically a detail, but just to monitor it really going into Shady Lane from Maple Ave.
Yeah, my only concern with it was on, is it Spruce Street, Shady Lane Spruce Street? It's just Spruce is really narrow and I think that was originally included in the plan. So I was just curious about that, but I support it, looks like a great event.
Yeah, the police have reviewed the road race route, they've, so they've agreed. Seems like they've signed off on the route, so I'm sure the detail will take into consideration that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Not entertain a motion?
Move approval, second.
Have been moved and seconded, a roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next items are correspondence. Item twelve, letter received December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four from National Grid regarding vegetation management, twenty twenty-five yearly operational plan. An interesting read, actually, so noted. Next, item thirteen, letter received December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four for Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Capital Asset Management Maintenance regarding Commonwealth search for about twelve thousand square feet of leased space, bunch of communities and including Shrewsbury, they're looking for storage space for things like the courts, so noted. Next item is email dated December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four from Matt Erzick, forty-seven Claremont Street, Westfield, Mass. Zero one zero eight five regarding say no to nicotine free generation regulations, so noted. Next item is a letter dated December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four from State Representative Hannah Kane and State Senator Michael Moore regarding proposed forty B project at one oh four Main Street, which we've talked a lot about regarding. And we had a fulsome discussion about that as well as we sent along a letter expressing our concerns with this project. And to Mr. Augustus, the Secretary of E O H L C. Representative Kane and Senator Moore had requested or encouraged the E O H L C to meet with the town of Shrewsbury regarding the proposed forty B project at one oh four Main Street, stating that the developer Saxon Partners has been unwilling to address the town's concerns with the project, which includes site control, public safety, environmental issues and conflict with our development goals, which are concerns that we had expressed at our meeting. We appreciate our state delegation's support, so that is so noted. And last item on correspondence is a letter dated December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four from Perry Gogden, Bogden Risk Analyst Branch Chief FEMA Region One regarding digital flood insurance rate maps for Worcester County, so noted. And the last item is a Z B A decision, Z B A decision of December sixteen, twenty twenty-four for Lloyd Brown for a variance of property located at twelfth Sather Avenue. Colleagues, that is it? Unless there's any other discussion, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Have been moved and seconded, a roll call vote is required. And Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Ayes.
Mr. Samia, aye. We are adjourned, thank you for joining us.
Have a good evening.